I don't hear any basketball.
Never.
Best basketball players, too.
Really?
Never, never, never. Looks like an old guy, huh?
Their class now.
Ken Larkin's still my hero. Ken Larkin's still my hero.
Our meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Mr. Rowley.
Here.
Mayor Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge given tonight by Council Member Lee Vogler Jr.
Laura, we come to you tonight thankful people, thankful for a great nation, thankful for a great city filled with tremendous people, thankful for the opportunity to come tonight and discuss issues that are important to the future of our city. Amen. I'd like to ask Girl Scout Troop 152 to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Member Vogler, and thank you to our Girl Scouts, do a great job every year. Under communication, those who wish to speak on matters not on the agenda will be heard at this time. If you wish to speak on any agenda items, you will be heard when that item is considered. In the event, there are those here tonight to speak with regards to the flag issue, that will come up under new business, item A. New business, item A, will be the time to discuss that. And if we have speakers regarding that, when we get there, I will ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes, please, okay? To three minutes. Also, I will ask the first speaker to ask those who support their views to please stand as well. At this time, anyone wish to speak on any item not on the agenda? Yes. Your name, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ambria Morton, and we are the Girl Scout Troop of 152. When we were here in March to celebrate Girl Scout Week, we told you about the Peace Pole Project coming up later on this year. Well, we have big news about this, but let's back up a little and remind you of the journey that got us here.
Hi, I'm Lauren. Girltopia was a journey that we finished last year. It was an awesome journey. It gave us the chance to imagine our ideal world, our own, YouTube, Priya. We use visionary leadership skills to imagine what we wanted in our perfect world. No fighting, no judgment, or negativity, none of that. We realized whether we were talking about social issues, the justice system, or government, none of it worked as we had hoped unless we were living in our peaceful society.
Hello, I'm Megiel Dalton. Every Girl Scout journey includes a take action project where we draw from one or more of the valuable lessons we learned and take action to let others know about it, to make a difference. Because we discovered that the basis of any productive society is peace, we wanted to dedicate a peace pole to the citizens of the South Side region. The peace pole will serve as a constant reminder to pray for peace and for everyone to embrace the beauty in the diversity of our neighbors, both here and around the world.
Hello, I'm Marissa Metters. We are now excited to share that the time is here. We have partnered with the YMCA and have planted the peace pole on their beautiful site along the sidewalk trail. We are very pleased to invite you to the dedication ceremony on Saturday, November 15th at 1:00. We are honored that Mayor Saunders will be a speaker and further that Councilman Vogler, a pass mentor to the Girl Scouts, will be our special guest. We hope each of you will be able to attend as well as all the citizens in the area because the peace pole is, after all, yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I look forward to coming to your event for the peace pole. I'd like to formally thank Mr. DeMasi for assisting me with that presentation. Look forward to being there. Thank you as well. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda?
What time was that at the YMCA?
1:00, thank you.
This servant?
15th, that correct? The 15th, the 1:00, 1:00. Thank you. Here's a motion to approve our minutes by regular council meeting held on October the 9th, 2014. Mr. Campbell, just a second. I'm sorry. Someone's wish to speak? I'm sorry, sir. I didn't see you coming. I apologize for that. Your name, please?
Sir, my name is Colonel Retired Lawrence Meehan. For the last 16 months, I've been a resident of the Old West End Historic District here in Danville. Today, Ms. Sonia Ingram of Preservation Virginia sent out an email to concerned citizens of Danville explaining the proposed demolition of historic homes at 208 and 233 Jefferson Avenue. These two homes are not the first to be demolished this year, and I suspect if you, the city council, does not act tonight, they will not be the last. I will point out that Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Rigney, both of the city of Danville and their staffs, have done a lot of positive work and a lot of heavy lifting in concerns with the historic districts and the city of Danville, but they are bound within the guidelines set by this city, the state, and federal law. They need your help. Demolishing a historic home is tragic, no matter the current condition. Many have seen firsthand the outcome when a home is brought down. It's a vacant lot. Tax revenue is reduced. My brother Fred and I, along with our crews, have worked tirelessly with contractors across the district to save as much historically significant materials as possible, but even there are constraints of time, space, and money. Demolishing historic homes cannot continue. It is a systematic erasing of our culture. In its place, vacant lots or Mc.Homes rise up, far from the beauty and elegance of the past. Any home can be saved. Just visit Chestnut, Green, Sutherland, or Holbrook, and I will show you. If you want a tour, just ask. We owe it to our children and our children's children to preserve our past. We cannot stay on the sidelines. We cannot agree that everything and every option has been explored. We must develop a clear and present path to success and then act upon it. Will we be the generation remembered as the ones who tore down the historic homes, board by board, brick by brick, street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood? Or do we want to be remembered as the ones who cared enough to save America's culture, our history, our past, from the wrecking ball, bulldozer, and grader? I ask our city council, elected by the people, for the people, to pass a moratorium this evening to halt the demolition of historic homes in Danville for six months so that the city, representatives from the community, the CCR, the DHS, the Virginia Preservation, lawyers, other city experts, and anyone from other cities that have faced the same problem can come together and perhaps collectively save our heritage. And if this esteemed group finds that there is no alternative to demolition, that at least a direct plan is developed and put in place as to what the next step is for the growing multitudes of vacant lots within the historic district and around Danville. I choose preservation. Do you? Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Could I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you for coming tonight. Colonel, is that correct, Colonel? You know, this demolition, this plan that we've had has been going on for a while. Is it a particular reason why people are coming forward now? And obviously, it's all about money and preservation. It costs a lot of money to somebody to come and buy these homes and put them up to speed. Do you think we really have enough interest that people will be willing to put their hard-earned money into these homes and preserve them?
Sir, I invite you to Chestnut Street.
Right. I would say Chestnut Street. I hear what you're saying. What I don't understand is this. This has been going on for a long time, and is it, why hasn't somebody come forward already?
I believe they've been working through the city and not coming directly to the council.
Right. I've been living in Danville all my life. Jefferson Street, I've known all my life.
I've been here for the last 16 months renovating homes within a historic district.
Right. But my understanding is, why has not somebody come forward in the decades that I've seen, the decades that I've seen Jefferson Street go down? What's going to happen between now and six months that hasn't happened over the last two decades? I'm just trying to get my hands around that.
In the last 16 months, easily 14 homes within a historic district have come up from where they were. That's a lot.
All right. And I'd love to see them all come up. I'd love to see all of them.
I had contracts on two homes, and the city put down demolition orders. I had to pull the contracts. I'd already paid the lawyer's fees for title searches, et cetera, but I can't be responsible for a home that the city's going to come in and tear down. The money's out there, the people are out there, the knowledge is out there, but it takes roughly about two years to bring a house back, if you do it correctly.
And again, I appreciate you coming and talking to us, because I agree with you. But I don't understand, over decades, why somebody hasn't come forward, and now you think somebody is. You really believe that? You've got a group that's going to come forward and do something.
You have a question, Mr. Rowley? You have a question?
Well, that was it. Do you understand? I mean, I don't understand what's happened over the last 20, 30 years that these houses have gone down, but now we have people that are coming.
Sir, I can't speak to the last... Three decades I was serving our country in the military. I was not here. I came to Danville every now and then to see my parents, and I witnessed the historic district going down. And I made it a quest when I left the military, a mission, a vision, to help restore your historic district. I'm doing it house by house, but I can't, obviously, I'm not working fast enough because the city of Danville is tearing them down faster than I can bring them back up.
Mr. Gilstrap. You requested a moratorium to halt demolition for six months.
Six months.
Does that exclude or include the ones presently being torn down?
The two homes I cited on Jefferson Street, I do not believe that any heavy equipment has been moved to that house. It looks as though maybe some of the services have been disconnected from the house because there was soil that was torn up. But I think you should just put a moratorium for six months to study this a little more deeper.
On any, where it's already started or not?
I mean, if they've already put a wrecking ball through the house for the safety of the public, obviously, you need to continue on that. There's a number of dwellings that are still in final stages of being put into an 18-wheeler and hauled to the landfill. So for safety reasons, obviously, I would need to continue on those, but I wouldn't start any new demolitions.
Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for coming down and speaking tonight, and you may or may not know, this is in the time that I've been on council, an issue that I've kind of taken interest in, blight and preservation, and ways that we can do things in addition or complimentary to what the city's already doing. One of those was something that I hope maybe, and because of this tonight, we can address again. I know we've got at least one new council member we didn't have the last time it was discussed, a blight task force committee. I wanted to have a group of citizens work with the city, kind of as a think tank, to come up with some solutions to do in addition to things that we're doing. I think most of us understand demolitions, to some extent, will always be a part of it. I mean, there's, for buildings in general. I mean, you can't, we can't save every single one of them. I do think we can do more to get back in the hands of the private sector, some of these properties that could be fixed. There's one thing that we've been talking about that might need some changes at the state level in terms of an online auction to get these properties over to people where they can do stuff. I'm open to suggestions on it. I certainly don't think I have all the solutions to the blight issue in Danville, and I don't think city council has all of them. So I'd like to hear from the public, and whether it's a six-month window or something, I'd be open to discussing that. But again, thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Thank you.
City Manager, Mr. King, I thought it was, what's the policy on demolition? I thought we only demolished those that were beyond repair.
That's correct.
So the two that he's speaking of here specifically is that we're in the process of demolishing have been designated as such. They are beyond feasible repair.
That's correct, and they constitute a public hazard.
Colonel, let me...
I will...
We are going to discuss this in work session.
Yeah.
I will agree that experts will go out to these homes and determine that they are, in their words, beyond repair. I will also tell you, I can bring another team of experts in that will tell you that it can be repaired. In the homes that I'm repairing, I'm removing the heat, the air conditioning, the plumbing, the electric, at times 50% of the foundations, main structural beams underneath houses, and putting it all back in. They can be repaired. It's just a dollar figure that might prevent somebody from repairing the structure.
Colonel, let me thank you for coming down and expressing your concerns. We are in the public comment period. You are the public, you are making your comments, and I can assure you, we will get a response to your request. Your request is recorded, you'll get a response, and quite frankly, we're going to talk about that in work session tonight. I'm imagining that's why councilmen have questions for you, because we'll talk about it a little later on. But thank you so much, but you will get a formal response.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else wish to speak on any item not on the agenda before we take action on the minutes? Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. I think Mr. Campbell made the motion for the minutes, Mr. Second for the motion for the minutes. Mr. Shanks, second motion, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Part of Budget Amendment, items A through D, that previously discussed with city council, introduced for first reading, will be further considered by city council. These items will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by a council member, item will be removed from the consent process and considered separately. Before I call for council action, anyone wish to remove any item A through D? Council, your pleasure. Mr. Gilstrap.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda items A through C.
C or D?
D.
D, okay. Is there a second? Mr. Buckner, discussion of the motion. I'm sorry, no discussion. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye. Affirmation of response on the Confederate flag removal request. Council, your pleasure. Mr. Rowley.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution directing the city manager to notify the board of the Danville Museum of Fine Arts and History that it cannot, under the Virginia law, legally remove the Confederate flag from the grounds of the museum.
There's a second? Mr. Buckner, discussion on the motion. Anyone wish to speak on the motion? If anyone in the audience wished to speak, again, we ask if you would to limit your remarks to three minutes if you can, and also, if you have supported with you, please act and withstand priority speaking, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Reverend William Avon King. I'm also a resident of the city of Danville. Give honor to Honorable Mayor, City Manager, and to the rest of our council and city officials. We are discussing some legal actions that I heard you discuss, but I've been in council all day, and I would ask the city attorney before I start, what I'm going to say, that you would look at a case in the city of Fredericksburg that's actually dealing with your stature, and I'll just leave that for that first. I would like to say also, the Southern Christian Leadership Conference is here today to thank the Danville Museum of Fine Arts Board for making a request to place the Confederate flag inside the museum for educational purposes. The Southern Christian Leadership would like to help to educate the community to the true history of our Confederate ideology by all groups coming together, bringing a united understanding of symbolism of the Confederate flag today. We cannot ignore the cornerstone speech and fly the Confederate flag. The Confederate flag has become a symbol of hate in the world today. The Confederate flag has become a gang or Klan sign that are subject to hate statues by law. The Confederate flag has been used by many in acts of hate and the process of hate crimes. The Confederate flag is not the voice of all Danville, Virginia citizens. Some citizens are more concerned about the federal laws that protect the rights to equality to all citizens than the questionable interpretation of the law being used to make states' rights statements. There are a number of alternatives to flying the Confederate flag as an innocent, defeated enemy of the United States of America. The taxpayer and citizens of the United States cannot stand quietly by while a Confederate flag is flying on property owned by the government, we the people. The citizens of Danville may have a legal claim under the First Amendment to the Constitutions of the United States of America, and a hate statue that could cost taxpayers, people, a large sum of money. Citizens have a right not to be represented by symbols that have been adopted by hate groups. Our citizens do not have to be subjugated to the symbols flying on government property that are linked to acts of terror by certain hate groups. We should be concerned about the economic impact the flag is and will have on our economy. With high unemployment, unity is not when one side tries to overpower the voice of the voiceless. I would also like to bring to attention that when I talk about the economic impact, some years ago, our organization joined in with the selective buying in South Carolina over the Confederate flag. Dollars were taken out of South Carolina. Also, when we talk about history, Jim Crow signs that says colored only are part of history. And I certainly wouldn't like to see a monument of a black slave with a rope around that neck hanging as a monument to those who fought for that life in the war of injustice. The statue that has been used is being questionable because if you read the writing, it states that wars between the states and those who died in Virginia in wars of the United States of America. The cornerstone speech states that our government rests on the great truth that the Negro is not equal to the white man who is superior. And it goes on, I'm paraphrasing, to say that slavery subordination is a normal and natural condition of the black man. I asked a question to most people since we've been in this battle, and by that statement, do you think I should be a slave? Because my normal condition, according to Alexander Stephens, a natural and normal condition is to be a slave. So according to the First Amendment, this is offensive. This flag has been used. I've marched in Forsyth, Georgia. I marched in Colonial Heights and the Greensboro Three. And when people were killed, this flag was on the scene. And when you see this flag, it is a symbol of hate, is equal to a gang sign today. People are put in jail for wearing colors of red and blue. Of course, red and blue is nothing wrong, but when it's used in a hate crime, it becomes a symbol of hate. And we would come today as an organization and as a citizen to tell the city that we're willing to work with you and help you to find an alternative. There are laws, just as the laws that have been cited to you. If necessary, we will send you some statues that will help you to avoid what could happen. And as you know, in history, in the city of Danville, history is demonstrations, sit-ins, lay-ins. That's part of history. And I would hate that Danville would have to repeat its history because of us not recognizing the offense of the Confederate flag to a certain segment of the community. So I thank you for your time. If you have any questions...
I do. I do have one. Do you have others with you supporting your position?
Yes, and if I had known you wanted others to stand, I would have brought more of the city.
Those who agree with Reverend King's position, would you please stand?
If everybody is in agreement with what I've just revealed, please stand. Should be the whole building. You want the council to stand, too?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Your familiar name, please.
Lawrence Campbell, Larry Campbell's daddy. Jessica Boozers.
We didn't know that.
Mayor Saunders, members of city council, I'm here tonight to express my personal feelings about the flying of the Confederate flag in our city. More than 50 years ago, I was thrown out of this chamber when Judge Archibald Aiken presided over the circuit court in this very room and when it was segregated. White people sat on the left side of this room, blacks sat on the right side. I chose to sit where white people were sitting, and Judge Aiken and the bailiff and the officer to pick me up and throw me down the steps in this building just a few feet from here. My wife in 1963 was beaten along with 49 other people who were marching for civil rights in that infamous night of June 10th. It was a terrible time in our city, and the city was greatly divided. In 1963, while we were marching, there were those in this city who waved the Confederate flag. Confederate flag and simultaneously wore the Confederate uniform as a sign of protesting integration of schools and access to public accommodations. The building, even as I speak where the flag is flying, was once the home of Danville's public library in nineteen sixty-three. Black people were not allowed to use the library solely because of race. We protested, and the city of Danville finally integrated the library. However, all of the chairs and tables were taken out of the library so that blacks and whites could not sit together. I called it vertical integration. In this city that I love, I saw this city in nineteen sixty-three become filled with hate and meanness, and we must not let this happen again. In nineteen sixty-three, I fought for the integration of the races and fought vehemently against segregation because segregation divides the community and integration brings us together. This flag is polarizing our community. The Civil War is a part of our American history. However, the one word that speaks to doing justice to history is continuity. You cannot dissect history. The Civil War is a reality, and we must understand and admit that it was ungodly to take a group of people, treat them as slaves, and use them for free labor to foster the economic system of the South. The Civil War was fought because the South, led by President Jefferson Davis, wanted to maintain slavery and their way of life at the expense of dehumanizing a race of people for over two hundred years. Flying the Confederate flag symbolizes hate. The skinheads, Ku Klux Klan, and other hate groups wave the Confederate flag, making a statement of racial divide. The Jewish community does not want to see the German swat sticker flag flown because it reminds them of the six million Jews who were exterminated in World War Two. I, as a black man, do not want the Confederate flag flying because it reminds me and others of a bitter time in history that we should not be proud of. Flying the flag is a silent statement for some to be proud of. However, for me, I see it as some people trying to justify slavery and not condemning it, but glorifying it. Let us not get stuck in the past, but let us, as God's children, build a better city for the future of generations to come. The last time that I stood before this august body, I asked you to appoint a race relations committee, and you did that. I'm grateful that you did. You named the committee Danville United. This flag is not uniting us. It is dividing us along racial lines. In other words, the flag is doing just the opposite of what we are trying to achieve. We, as citizens of this community, should not do anything that would be offensive to any segment of people in our city. Keeping the flag is a reminder of a time in American history that we refuse to accept as right in the sight of God and man. I do not know what all of the legal ramifications would be if the flag were to be taken down. However, let us, as a people in this city, black and white, do the right thing and demand that the flag come down as a statement of the community and the world that we are united in Danville. When the question is asked, is Danville united? Let the answer be yes, we are united. However, actions speak louder than words. We in this city must not permit a flag, people, or anything in the future to divide us. We need each other regardless of race. Let us work together toward a united Danville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I conclude my statement by saying, take the flag down. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Your name, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tommy Reginald Bennett. I'm a citizen of Danville, Virginia. I would like to say I, um, have been a member of this city and a lot of organizations. I'm fifty-eight years old, grew up in North Danville, where I, uh, attended, um, elementary school on Youth Street at Grass School, where I was pushed off the sidewalks every day from, uh, kids from Stonewall Jackson and from, um, the other school that was down the street from Stonewall Jackson, that was a school on the corner of Main Street as well. And we all decided that our parents, it was so bad that our parents started taking us to school. Um, it's always been a wonderful day, the first day that my grandmother got to vote. I went with her. The voting polls was at Stonewall Jackson School. This was in the sixties, in the early sixties. My grandmother was so happy, and when we got to Stonewall Jackson School, she had me by my hand. They had barricades up on each side, Confederate flags were flying, and it's calling the N-words, and they spit on myself and my grandmother. So, I was pushing back, and my grandmother said, Tommy, I'm voting today. You look straight ahead, and we're walking into Stonewall Jackson so I can vote. I said, grandmother, you told me spitting on people is nasty. And my grandmother said, Tommy, don't you worry about that because I fix their food and lemonade every day. So, I, I didn't know what she meant until I got older, but to see how things happened. My father had an office in this courthouse as a professional belt boxer. I grew up in City Hall working with my father. Some days I would come down to the courthouse after school to meet him, and I had to use a water fountain at the back of the courthouse because the cold water up front were for whites only. I do remember riding the city bus when it says color to the rear. I remember going to the movie theater and when I had to sit in the balcony and couldn't go to the Capitol Theater, but we had to sit in the balcony. So, there's a lot of things in my fifty-eight years that I have experienced in this city, and I am one of those person who went up to that public library to use and couldn't sit down and use. And if I opened a book, the young lady at the desk would tell me to bring that book, and they would throw the book away because a black person had handled the book. I remember going to the, to the YMCA, myself and three other friends. We joined the Y on Main Street, and when we got into the swimming pool, whites were told to get out of the pool. And I told my friends, why are you all getting out of the pool? And they said, because my parents told me to get out. The flag is, should come down. There is one flag, and that's the American flag, and that's the only flag that should be flown. And I would like to say to all the council members, put yourself in my position. And I'm sure, I'm sure, just let me know if you can sleep at night to know that a hate crime such as a flag flying on public property, not private, you can fly your flag, fly it on your property. My dad had a lot of property all over Danville. He sold the property so they could build Langston School. He sold property so they could build Camilla Williams Park. He even gave a church of property that's named Bennett Memorial Baptist Church to this day. So, I am well-known in this city. My father was well-known, was a very rich man, and I would like to see that flag come down. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
I do.
Mr. Rowley?
I do. Um, I'm sixty-three, so, uh, I saw a lot of things that you saw, and it was wrong.
Yes.
It was very wrong, but I just wanna ask a couple of questions. I don't mean to be uppity by this, but you say you were pushed off the sidewalks. How long ago was that?
I was in the sixties.
So it's fifty-
And the seventies wasn't even better.
Fifty years ago.
And twenty-fourteen, it's not in a better. It's just done in a different form.
Fifty years ago, and I, I just, you know, look, it was wrong. I, I tell you it was wrong. I used to ride the bus from North Danville. My daddy worked at Sears Roebuck, where Clementine Wheatley is now. I used to get a little transfer and ride the bus, and I remember telling my mother, this isn't right, and it wasn't right. Uh, but we, some of the things you're bringing up were fifty years ago. And it, as a human race, we, we gotta start loving each other and get over these things. And I, I just, I just don't, if this happened two weeks ago, if it happened two years ago, and I hear what you're saying, it was wrong. I am so sorry that that happened to you and your grandmother. I mean, I can't tell you how sorry I am it is, but somehow, we, as a group of people, have got to move forward and for, I don't know, we just got to move forward. And, and I thought in nineteen ninety-four, there was a great compromise between all the factions that, that looked at that. And, um, and now we're bringing it up again, and I think it's bringing back stuff that really, again, it was in our youth. It was when we were five and six years old, and, uh, I would hope I've grown from that now, and I love, some of my best, some of my best friends are African-American, and I just love them, and, but somehow, as a group of people, we got to move forward. And I'm just sorry that you carry this hate for so long, and I can't imagine what you've been through. I, I'll be the first to admit, I cannot imagine what you and your grandmother went through. But I just hope we can move forward as a group of people together and, and put this stuff behind us and move forward.
Well, I, I'm so glad you mentioned nineteen ninety-four because that was the statue in nineteen ninety-four, but the statue changed in ninety-seven. Now, I don't know what attorney that you all had to research this, but the statue changed. And in the city of Fredericksburg, this same case went to court. The same thing that we're arguing about tonight, it went to court, and it was ruled that they had to bring the flag down. So, what made the rules and the laws any different from one part of Virginia to another part of Virginia?
Mr. Buckler?
What year was the Fredericksburg case? Do you know?
And, uh, it was ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three, somewhere during that time.
When they, they took it down?
Yes.
The current state code of Virginia that is what we've gone off of was adopted in two thousand and ten, I believe, so that might be why it's-
Well, the statue did change, so if you do your research and do your history, you will find out that the statue did change.
I know, that's what I'm speaking of, the current one.
It changed in two thousand and ten.
Yes. So, are you saying that the flag should stay?
That's not what we're discussing, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you for letting me speak. Um, I spoke last time. My name is Michael Yami, and, uh, I'm glad you brought up some of those things from the past. I'm part Jewish and part Christian, and I was, my nickname was Jew Boy, so I had to get over that, and what I found that was, that was a lesson for me. God, you know, showed me what I shouldn't do. It hurt me, so I didn't hurt anybody. It's very unfortunate that there are people that have used that Confederate flag with hate in their hearts, but I guarantee you that is not the case. You, I asked each and every one of you last time, challenged you to look in the Bill of Rights and show me where it says you have the right to not be offended. You do not. Um, I'm offended when I see Nazi symbols, um, but you know what? If I told them they couldn't do that, then that means I can't fly my flag, and that means you can't fly Old Glory. When you start taking down flags from soldiers, then you have to take that one too, and that's gonna be the next one if we do this. You cannot do that. It's a state law. If you take it off Confederate, you're gonna have to take it off a Union soldier. Um, I'll remind you that the President of the United States reinstated Robert E. Lee back to his citizenship for a reason, because that man was a great man, an honorable man, gallant, and he was not have one ounce of hate in his heart. That man freed his slaves before the war, and I'll remind you that Union General Grant kept his afterwards because he said, where else can I find good help? So you telling me why he did that? That man had hate in his heart. And I just, I just needed to get up here and say that because just being offended is, everybody gets offended every day. It's what you do with it. And I ask each and every one of you to look inside that little spark of God that is inside of you and do the right thing and honor these people who defended this land so that you could live here and be here today. We were all Virginians. I don't wanna be divided. I wanna be together. I've got black blood in me as well. All of you are, we're all have God in us, and you need to reach inside there and know that we love each other, and we were all in that fight. The government was coming down on us. What government would send his troops to attack citizens, rape them, rape the slaves as well, take all their food and just make them destitute? Well, I guarantee you, Robert E. Lee made sure that we didn't do that, and we punished those Confederates that did that because those are the ones that had hate in their heart. And I also wanna point out one other thing. The Ku Klux Klan used that flag right there on Capitol Hill way before the Confederate flag. It was only four years. The first slave ship to be built was in Massachusetts in the sixteen hundreds. It was called Desire, and the only flag that ever flew over any slave ship was Old Glory, not the Confederate flag. It was only for four years, and it was a flag against tyranny, a flag to protect you from a government that would be overbearing. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you reach in your hearts and you see the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Your name, please.
Good evening. Marcus Hughes, resident of Danville, Virginia. Um, I sat today, and I listened to what was being said, and I've heard a lot of the messages that's being said, and I will tell you, sitting in here listening, um, has really disturbed me, especially when I hear, um, someone say, when can we get over this? There's never a time period where we can get over it, where we continue to experience the hate and the racism that continues to go on in this nation to this very day. And you, uh, there has been someone who went back and stated that, now he's sixty-some-odd years, and, you know, he experienced this, uh, this movement in his youth. Well, I can tell you, I'm twenty-nine years old, and I was about eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, when I had a Confederate flag waved in my face, uh, not in a very nice manner, but it was more in a way where I will quote the young man who stated that God blessed Africa, America, and not Africa. Now, I will ask you, if we had gotten over it, then why am I, twenty, at the time, seventeen year old, having to shed the same tears that my great-grandfather had to shed when he was out experiencing the same things that I had to go through? I got spit on. This is not back in the sixties. This was nineteen ninety-nine, this was two thousands, when I got spit on. And now, as we continue to go on, and we continue to water through the media, we're starting to see more and more racism that's rising up today. So I, I ask you, when you see a Confederate flag waving in your face, and you think about what that means, and when I go and look at my grandmother, who was still living and still remember everything you remember, but she was on the opposite end, experiencing a very different form of racism, because how would you feel knowing that she has to continue to come into the city of Danville, and she has to continue to wave, see that flag waving, and always have to be reminded of all of the pain and all of the anger that she had to go through and experience simply because of the color of her skin? And I would ask if you would go to her and say to her, when are we gonna get over that? When do you put a person in a position, when you tell them, or put a timeframe, or when they get an opportunity to heal from their brokenness? And that's all I want to say. I will be more than glad to answer any questions.
And Mr. Rowley?
I'd like to say, just so you'll get a, get a little feel. Um, this week, this week, that's pretty current. I've had people spit in my face. I've had people call me up and tell me I'm a loser. I've had people call me up and say, I don't know what the hell I'm doing on this council and the way I, the way I vote. I've had it ever since I've been doing it for ten years. You, you can't believe some, what some of the people have told, not just me, but the other people up here. You cannot understand how hurtful it is to me. But let me ask you this. A hundred years from now, are we ever going to move forward and say, the past is the past, history is history, we all agree it was not right, and let's move forward? A hundred years from now, we're gonna be saying the same thing? 'Cause I can tell you, the people that call me up and tell me how dissatisfied they are with me, that, oh, by the way, I'm not gonna give to the place you work anymore. They're taking it out on the people that I work with. Oh, forget that. I'm not doing that anymore because you're not any good. I understand, it's their opinion, and I move on. I move on. I, I, it would kill, it would kill me if I had to just keep taking all this, uh, uh, this bitterness. How do, how do you live with something like that? I, I can't do it. I've just gotta move on, I've gotta appreciate their opinion, and I've gotta move on. That's what I'm talking about, sir. Thank you.
Respectfully, buddy, Ron, I will say this, and I, I sympathize with you for what you have gone through, but I will also say to you that their statements that they were made, that were made towards you, did not hold you back the way that the statements, along with the laws and regulations that was created to keep people like myself, my ancestors, from being able to participate and being in the, in voting rights, and uh, it, your struggle really does not equal to the struggle that we continue to deal with. And your struggle really does not equal to the struggle that we continue to deal with on today. And so until we can understand that and sympathize with the fact that even today, we're still fighting to be able to have the rights of everyone else. We're still not equal, even though we want to say that we're equal. We still have a long ways to go. If we were equal, we would not need the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. We may as well call Reverend Avon King to sit down today.
Mr. Hughes, please respectfully allow me to inject here.
Yes, sir.
Inject. We're having a discussion. We have a motion on the floor, property second. We are in discussion. I appreciate your views. Councilman Rawls presses views. I appreciate Councilman Rawls' views. I'm concerned that this is becoming a debate.
Okay.
Okay? As opposed to how I feel about the issue, we're headed toward a debate, and this is not the forum to debate.
Yes, sir.
Discuss, we can discuss things.
I can end.
But when we start going back and forth, we're debating, and I prefer not to do that in this.
I will end, and this is how I would end. I would end by saying...
And I say that respectfully.
Yeah, and I would, thank you. I would end this by this, by saying this. Removing that flag does a whole lot more than just sitting and, you know, than anything anyone can imagine. Removing that flag is keeping my grandmother, who again, still travels back and forth to the hospital doing missionary work, have to pass that flag. It would keep her from having, and others who have experienced the racial injustice in having that flag and every, any other form of racism thrown in their face. It would keep her from having to be reminded of a very ugly place in history. And so there, I ask that you please just remove the flag for their sakes. It's going to be inside the museum. You'll be able to see it. So just take it out of the place where it's going to remind others, so that the people who really want to see it can always go in and have a view of piece of history.
Thank you, sir. I think, Mr. Campbell, may I have a question for you? Mr. Campbell?
No, I don't have a question. If I'm in order, I would like to make an amendment to the resolution.
Well, I would like to finish getting, if you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Getting the audience comments before we go further. You're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Katie Whitehead. My understanding at this point is that the city manager is making his, in making his request, has cited Virginia law that forbids altering any monument honoring veterans of any wars. I understand the city attorney has researched this issue for you. I have not seen a written legal opinion regarding the application of current Virginia law to the museum's request and its particular circumstances. I think the community would benefit from gaining a better understanding of whether and how the Danville Museum's proposal is different from action taken by museums in Richmond and Appomattox, which do not fly the Confederate flag outdoors. The community might also benefit from obtaining a written opinion from Virginia's Attorney General. Please consider requesting his interpretation of Virginia's law. Was the intention of the current statute to keep this flag flying here? I don't know. I don't think it's clear, and I think we need to be clear.
Ms. Whitehead, I'd like to act the attorney, if you wish to comment on your presentation. But let me say this. On the legal side, the city manager was not involved in the legal side at all.
Well, I'm quoting today's paper, which said he had cited that law.
But with regard to your question, Mr. Attorney, if you wish to comment, it's your call.
Well, quite frankly, my discussions with you all are attorney-client privilege, and I'm ethically bound not to do anything to disclose those discussions.
Well, I think, I think we would, could benefit from a better understanding, and that it might be, it might be useful to see how the Attorney General interprets that law.
Thank you. Ms. Gilstrap?
Could we have a reading? Mr. City Attorney, do you have, can you read the law? Do you have the copy that we have, which spelled out every single war?
I don't have it with me tonight.
Does anyone have it?
I've got it. I'm not sure where in this package it is. Mr. Gilstrap, did you want the whole part or the...
The part that says, it names all the wars that this affects and what authority anyone has over a monument?
A locality within the geographical limits of the locality authorize and permit the erection of monuments or memorials for any war or conflict, or for any engagement of such war or conflict, to include the following monuments or memorials. Argonne Quinn, French and Indian Revolutionary War of 1812, Mexican Confederate or Union monuments or memorials of the War Between the States, Spanish-American, World War I, World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, Operation Desert Shield, Desert Storm, Global War on Terrorism, Operation Enduring Freedom, and Operation Iraqi Freedom. If such are erected, it shall be unlawful for the authorities of that locality or any other person or persons to disturb or interfere with any monuments or memorials so erected, or to prevent its citizens from taking proper measures and exercising proper means for the protection, preservation, and care of same. For the purposes of this section, disturb or interfere with includes removal of, damaging, or defacing monuments or memorials, or, in the case of the War Between the States, the placement of Union markings or monuments on previously designated Confederate memorials, or the placement of Confederate markings or monuments on previously designated Union memorials.
That's good. Thank you. You have more, Ms. Whitehead?
No, I guess I, I still feel like there, there could be further clarification as to how the law applies in this particular case. And I would appreciate your making more information available generally to the public.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Willie Wells. I'm the Second Lieutenant Commander of the Edmund Ruffin Fire Eaters Camp 3000, Mechanicsville, Virginia. I'm here tonight to show our support, to keep the flag, and not like the first three speakers who tried to talk about hate, and, you know, the war was not about slavery. And if they do their history, they'll find out that. Two weeks ago, myself and eight other people from the state of Virginia traveled to Monroe, North Carolina, to a funeral service of a real daughter of a Confederate soldier. Her name was Maddie Clayborne, and I have a picture of her right here. She was a black lady. Over 250 people were at this funeral. About 230 of them were white. The rest were family members of Maddie Clayborne. This is what the Sons of Confederate Veterans is about. Honor our ancestors, black and white. This racial division thing because of a flag is nonsense. Like Michael said, you know, the Confederacy existed for four years. In those four years, never once did a flag of the Confederacy fly on a ship bringing slaves to this country. The American flag, British flag, Spanish flag, numerous other country flags brought slaves to this country. The biggest slaveholder in the state of Virginia was a black man. The biggest slave owner in the country during the Civil War was a gentleman from Pennsylvania, a northerner, who used the slaves in the South to make his money, which went north. People need to get over this division of hate. It's not hate. It's history. It's heritage. And we need to get to that point. This flag has not harmed a person. It's a flag. It's a Southern Cross of St. Andrews on that flag, Christian flag. And I ask the city councilman to take that into consideration tonight and leave the flag where it's at, under the Virginia Code section. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Reverend Fuller, I'm a resident here in Danville. Sitting there listening, I hear both sides, and the thing, I believe the issue is that we're not trying to erase history. Just put it in a proper place for education. And if we put it in the proper place for education, anybody who wants it can come in and receive it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, y'all. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jeffrey A. Newton. My family's been Mecklenburg County. I know I'm a little out of the county, but my family's been Mecklenburg County for 1630. We came in as, I believe it's called, indulging slaves. Yes, we were white. We were slaves. But we got over it. We did what we're supposed to do. We worked hard. Now that I've researched my history and this, that, and the other, I am a son of the Confederacy. I am the commander of the Armistead Hill Guard. I am very proud of my heritage. We have worked hard for what we have and done, and I don't know, some people might not know, but in Pennsylvania County, there were black Confederates. I will name a few of them. G.M. Bullitt, he was a blacksmith. Him and his dad worked for the blacksmith for the Confederacy. The reason why I'm giving these names is because they were approved pensions. That means they were paid. They were not slaves. They were paid to do their duty, the work, the labors, and everything they did. Green Conley, he was a laborer, but he got paid. He was an infantry soldier. Giles Dickerson, he was also in infantry. William Finley. And we have a Reverend, James Saunders. He was a Reverend, and he was in the Confederacy Army. Thank you for your time. You know, the flag is not hatred. It's our heritage. It's everybody's heritage. If y'all go back in y'all's histories and y'all's family trees, you'd be surprised what you will find. Your ancestors are everywhere. It's, it's, once you start putting that book, all this information starts flooding in. It gets very emotional when you find out. It's like, wow, I didn't know this person was a writer to me. And wow, on my mom's side, Cherokee, the Trail of Tears, yes. Geronimo Custer got his rewards for what he did to all the Indian from the Sioux and on, you know? He massacred them, but he got his when he went to Little Big One. Thanks, y'all. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name's Steve Atkins, and I think we kind of got off a topic here a little bit, and I understand the passion on both sides of the issue. But what we're really talking about is a historic site and historically accurate flag to fly on that site. And it's, it's not about blacks, it's not about whites. It's a lot like Pearl Harbor. It's a lot like Valley Forge. And if you really think about it, this place is where it all ended. This is where the Confederacy is all. This flag is historically accurate to be there. We're not asking for it to be on town halls. We're not asking for it to be on another public building. We're asking for it to be in a historic place where it actually belongs. If you really, you know, I understand the emotions on both sides. When I see a POW flag, it raises some strong emotions for me, because I understand what this flag represents. People choose whether or not they're offended, and I, I won't make apologies for that, but that's a choice that you can make. But the flag can be where it's lying there. It's just historically accurate. It's not a slide you need by, and it's not trying to raise any emotions or to bring about any hatred. If we were flying it all over downtown, that would be entirely different. It's at the last cap of the Confederacy. If it's there, I can choose to look at it to honor my ancestors and all of them for it. Other people would choose to look at it and say, "This is fine with the place where that ended. It's fine with the place where that was all over." We could use this as an educational experience rather than divisive issue. And what kind of bugs me is that for the past 20 years, it's...
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. When you turn from the microphone, I can't hear you.
What kind of bugs me is that for 20 years, it's been there, and it hasn't been an issue. And then all of a sudden, we bring it up, and we make it an issue. People on both sides get upset, and now our city's in the limelight for something it really shouldn't be in the limelight for. To be quite honest, when Mr. King was talking about the economic impact, if we actually celebrated that place as the end of Confederacy, and we advertised Danville, Virginia as a historical destination, I think the impact would be a lot stronger than what we're getting out of it. And if the museum so chooses to be offended by the building, I would say the museum's welcome to move to another building. That building wasn't designed as a museum anyway. It's the building that's the last cap of the Confederacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name's Tony Lundey. I was born in Danville. I'm a businessman here. I want to first of all thank the city council. Y'all showed us a lot of respect and gave us plenty of time to speak, and I appreciate it. And I want to say, not here with any hate in my heart at all. I could hate that flag, because I'm a quarter Cherokee, but I don't. And I will say this, I'm here with love in my heart. I love Virginia. I love this state. I love the history of this state. The history of this state, I brought some handouts tonight, so I, for brevity. The history of this state, 1606, the Virginia Charter. It goes back, this charter goes from the Atlantic to the Pacific, and it says, "The purpose: propagation of Christian religion." That was the original purpose of the Virginia Charter. I want to say a few things about Virginia. The man, the birth certificate of Virginia, the Declaration of Independence penned by Thomas Jefferson, the President of the First Continental Congress, Peyton Randolph, the agitator for armed resistance, the great Virginian, Patrick Henry, our Commander-in-Chief and our first President, George Washington, the man responsible for the adoption of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights was James Madison. Does it signify, it should, it should stir your hearts to know that all of these are Virginians. Virginia, the United States, the Union called these United States was started right here. Liberty and independence was started right here in Virginia. And I'm going to move on here. There's, there's a map right here, and I got a copy for you guys, too, because I'm going to go through this fast for brevity. This map shows the vote took on April 4th, 1861. Virginia, by two-thirds majority, a landslide, including Pennsylvania County, voted to stay with the Union that we started, because we was hoping calmer heads would prevail. And we voted to stay with the Union. And guess what? Eleven days later, Lincoln's Secretary of War, Simon Cameron, sent a letter asking for Virginia to supply troops. Now, Virginia didn't want to secede, but they believed, and they knew, because they knew the Constitution better than anybody. They wrote it. Virginia believed in the right to secede, but they didn't want to. We wasn't secessionists. We were Unionists. They called the Call of Arms the next day. That's why we fought in Virginia, is because of that Call of Arms. It wasn't slavery. It was because of the Call of Arms. It's because we loved Virginia. We were going to defend Virginia, and we loved the Constitution. Virginia, and we loved the Constitution. April sixteenth, Governor John Letcher sends a response to Simon Cameron. This is, this is twelve days after we have just had a landslide victory, to stay with the Union, and he said, "Sir, you have chosen to inaugurate civil war, and having done so, we'll meet it in a spirit as determined as the administration has exhibited toward the South." The next day, there was another vote. Here's the map again, and Pennsylvania County, as well as most of, of Virginia, decided to secede for constitutional reasons and depend, and to defend our state. Thank God that we have a law on the books that protects that, but we shouldn't need it, we should be able to protect it without laws on the books. And I know the Virginians here, and this, this place is full of good Virginians, but I know these Virginians right here would do anything they could to protect it, for honorable reasons, because we love Virginia, we love our parents, we love our grandparents, our great-great-grandparents, the people that fought back then. If you take that flag down, you're saying they were evil people, and they wasn't, they were standing up for Virginia, and I think that's something some more of us could do There's one, one more thing I want to say, and I've got handouts, if anybody wants to look at this. I have a statement. "I believe that the nineteen ninety-four arrangement should be maintained. It's important to honor agreements and not to allow future agitations to upset agreements that was reached after much controversy, deliberation, and compromise." Former Congressman Virgil Goode gave that to me to read. And I also have a check from Virgil Goode, and I, I offered to pay it myself, he said, "No." He said, "I want him to see my check." He's joining the museum, and me and him agree, a lot of us need to join the museum and make sure that they know how we feel over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else before we go to council discussion? Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Clark, I'm one of the sons of Confederate veterans. And when we sat here tonight and listened to all these supposedly horror stories about how bad blacks were treated back in the sixties, I'm sixty-two years old, and my mother and father taught me to respect everybody. I lived on Claiborne Street, it was already mixed. I can remember leaving my grandma's house, running down to Ms. Cruz's house, going in, raving the candy jar, and coming back out. Everybody got along until the politicians got into it. That flag was, was abused by some hate groups, but Ku Klux Klan fly a Christian flag and a United States flag. I believe the Confederate flag should fly another two hundred years right where it is, because it represents history, it represents defiance against tyranny. My mother and father, I can remember, I know that a lot of trash men were black, and when they would come around the house, mama would feed them, she would give them clothes, and they were just, they were trying to help out. It wasn't all a hate thing. My mom and dad taught me to respect the Jews, the blacks, the whites, everybody. If I'd have said yell or naught to somebody, they'd have smacked my mouth. So I haven't had any trouble with, with black folk all my life, but I just, I wonder where more stories are at of compassion and love between each other, but when you get the politics in it, it's a mess. And in eighteen sixty-two, Mr. Lincoln had a conference with a group of blacks in Washington, D.C., and he told them, "We suffer from each other's presence. One should be elevated to, to superior, and the other should be sub, superior, be subordinate." And this was Lincoln in favor of the white man being on top. And speaking of education, these kids in these schools now are being brainwashed to a New England myth. They're not taught anything about the truth of, of the South. So all I can say is, is there's more to the story than we've, than a lot of people have been taught, and it took me twenty years to get in this position to where I could speak and talk about this, this subject. The schools didn't teach me, I had to educate myself. So I'm in favor of that flag flying, it hadn't bothered anybody, and it won't bother anybody. Let it fly.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Patrice Carter. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I just want to read a, a little letter. I'm just saddened really tonight, I'm really saddened by this city, but this is a letter, and I hope my phone holds up, it says, "Dear fellow white liberal parent, you're not a racist, but are you parenting nice kids with racist white conditioning? Please let me explain. I'm a white Irish woman who grew up all over the world in places such as Egypt, Malaysia, and Ireland. Even though I saw the world and always tried to be nice to everyone, I was afflicted by racist white conditioning. Adopting children of color kickstarted my recovery from that. Part of that recovery is this letter to you. For many parents, there were two themes that dominated the summer of twenty fourteen. Our kids dancing around, singing the wonderful songs of the animated movie Frozen, and the unnecessary killing in Ferguson, Missouri of Michael Brown, a young black man. What if I suggested to you that there was a connection between Frozen and Brown's killing? Entertainment like Frozen is conditioning you and me and our children to expect a whitewashed world where people of color are the other. I know it's hard to fight Hollywood, Hollywood, but did you talk to your children about how that movie did not fairly represent people of color? When I think about the police officer who killed Michael Brown, I wonder how his parents raised him. To be fair, he was simply the guy who pulled the trigger, trigger. We all killed Michael Brown. At its root, Brown was killed because being black in America is being the other. In Frozen, and too many of the movies that our kids and ourselves are influenced by, black people are not even the other, they are often not even represented. Now, many white folks might rack their brains, thinking I'm wrong, and might try to remember the black faces they saw in Frozen. Trust me, apart from a few guests at the ball who never appeared again, they are not there, certainly not in any valid way. When I complained to my white friends about Frozen and about how movies such as How to Train Your Dragon Two, where all the characters were white, except for the bad guy, my white friends defend the movies with cries of historical accuracy. This is simply not accurate. These movies are fictional fantasy. We all know dragons are not real, and snowmen don't talk. A person of color with a speaking part, should that not, should not be such a stretch. Frozen is not even historically accurate in representing the population of Denmark, where the story was based, as white. There were people of color in Denmark at the time this story draws its origins from. You will find this excellently proven with documented fine art. We are all conditioned from birth in matters of such things as equality, beauty, design, comfort, and tradition. We are all affected by what we see around us, whether we like it or not, our world conditions us from all, from point of white dominance. To actively exclude people of color from children's entertainment is especially racist and destructive to our society. Television shows were mostly white and male-dominated, Santa Claus and all his elves were certainly white, even God was a white man. While my brain was developing, all of my environmental stimuli were conditioning me to accept a white, male-dominated world, in which most, in which most depictions of people of color were intensely negative. Beauty in commercials and magazines was catered to men with a passion for skinny white women. The art world was dominated by crazy white men, and the world was run by rich white men, and at least one brutal white woman. Some of my musical influences were black, but then Elvis died, and Michael Jackson changed his face. I realize things have changed a little, but not nearly enough. I was raised to be a nurturing and giving child. I was taught how to have pity for the plight of the poor people of Africa. I picked rose hips by the millions, collected pennies in a box for black babies, and donated my dolls and my golly wog, inherited from my grandmother to charity. Very subtly and powerfully, my young brain had imprinted beauty, power, wealth, charity, and goodness with being white. Criminals, famine victims, the desperately poor, and the receivers of charity as black and brown and other than me. Of course, there were exceptions, but this was my general environment. Being a nice, white liberal woman, I rejected white liberal racism and inequality. In the nineties, I moved to New York City, and I began working to help underprivileged youth, who were mainly people of color. I dated people I was attracted to regardless of their race, and I socialized with a very diverse group. I was never a racist, but I had racist white conditioning that I could not even see. Mortified and disgusted by racism and inequality, many nice, white liberal people are still complacent. Our white movies, commercials, TV shows, news reports, and all the other racist white conditioning keeps on coming, and we keep on buying it as if it's not killing people of color. What does this have to do with Danville, Virginia in two thousand and fourteen? I ask you that question. Answer for me, what does that have to do with Danville, Virginia in two thousand and fourteen?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
Ladies. Wayne Byrd, President of the Danville Chapter of the Heritage Preservation Association. Heard a lot of the same, it's almost like deja vu. I was here twenty years ago, the very same thing. It saddens me to see this happen to my city. I grew up here, that's the only thing that got me involved in it. I was here to first argue over a parade permit. I went out there to those steps, and I prayed to my Father in heaven. Said, "Lord, give me the strength to come before City Council, I'm just a simple man." I didn't know what the future held for me. He said, "Wayne, you go, and I'll be with you." I said, "Okay." He's still with me, and I'm here now. We were having parades, flying flags all around town, we didn't want it to spill over in the school system, so we stopped. Said, "What I do now, Father?" He said, "There's, just wait." Another door opened. We formed the HPA, a national organization, to go against the NAACP's resolution that was passed in eighty-three for the removal of all Confederate flags, symbols, anything like that nature from public property. I came before the city council, we argued, we talked, many meetings, behind the doors, individual. I'm sorry I haven't met with y'all, I've had a lot of personal things going on in my life right now, and I hadn't been able to, I'm looking forward to it in the future. Get back on the subject, the Lord opened up many doors. I needed an attorney. Back then, I said, "I need an attorney to help me write up something here." Go with the city's council, and the city attorney saw, he said, "Be patient, Wayne." Lo and behold, there was one. Okay, so then we went into negotiations. Again, we negotiated and negotiated over this. City granted us the piece of property to put a historical marker honoring Danville's history and heritage in the property as a, as a Confederate memorial in the last Capitol of the Confederacy. I said, "Wow." Well, now I got to build a monument. Where did I get all this money? He said, "Be patient, Wayne, be patient, I'll open the doors." He opened for me, and as it went on, we dedicated the monument. We held a few parades afterwards on Lee, probably Lee and Stonewall Jackson, educational, honoring great Virginians. But there comes a time when you kind of outlive usefulness as far as being an organization. Everybody was quiet, there was not a lot of objection to everything, flag flew for twenty years. Again, the museum, that is what we questioned twenty years ago, is it in harmony? I do not see the harmony twenty years ago, I do not see it today. It is a tenant of a building that you are the landlords of, need to evict, because they're troublesome, they keep causing discord in the community and bringing these same issues up. It's only when they can find someone that can be intimidated enough as a director that they come forward again. Well, twenty years ago, when we entered this agreement on the monument, I knew the only way that we, it was out that it could be removed, was like you say, be removed from We said, "Well, we believe and trust in future city councils members that they would honor this resolution." When this came up, I said, "Oh, my gosh, they're going to move it." That was the only thing they could do. The Lord covered my butt when He had that law in Virginia passed, because He knew the evil hearts of men and the bigotry and the hatred against the southern people would rise up again. That is what has stopped y'all from moving that flag. Not no man made law. My Father in heaven, my brother Jesus Christ, stopped it. It will come down when He says it will come down. And I thank you for your time, and that's why I haven't had a lot to say about this subject, but I do feel saddened for my community that we have to go through all of this again, when it could have been avoided. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let me ask one more time before we move, before we move the discussion to council, anyone else, and then we're going to move the discussion to council. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elsie Francine Gordon, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about a Virginia city that limited the Confederate flag flying. In Lexington, Virginia, a rural Virginia city where Robert E. Lee and Thomas Stonewall Jackson are buried, on Thursday, limited the flying of the Confederate flag on poles on several downtown streets. This goes back to two thousand and eleven. After more than two hours of heated debate, the Lexington City Council voted four to one to allow only the U.S. flag, the Virginia flag, and the city flags to be displayed. Personal displays of the Confederate flag are not affected. I just want to give my opinion that what Lexington, Virginia decided, it was because it was found to be divisive, and unless we can agree to not fly the, the Confederate flag, the, the city council should do some more research and come back with unrefutable, undeniable evidence that, that it must stay up, because otherwise, it's a divisive flag, and it's, it's, it's not uniting people, and it's something that we should get rid of. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight is the third meeting where we talked about the flag, and tonight, we have run over, already over an hour of discussion. Let me move discussion to council, we still have a motion on the floor and property second. Discussion, my counsel, Mr. Camel?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If I could, I would like to make an amendment to the motion that in new business, Section A, would say that it cannot, under the Virginia law, legally remove the Confederate flag from the grounds of the museum, that we would change that to allow a vote from council to keep it up or keep it down. And in reference to what Councilman Shanks spoke on Article fifteen dash two, the war for war veterans, that can be amended by a council. Council has the power to legally ask it is or to make an amendment to it, but my first step would be to allow- But my first step would be to allow council to vote on the issue to keep it up or keep it down.
Let me refer this to our attorney to make sure that we understand that we are in order. Your motion is in order to make one. Make sure we understand the meaning of the motion, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir, the motion is in order. It's a substitute motion under Robert's Rules of Order.
So it's not an amended motion, a substitute motion?
That's correct. But procedurally, it is treated like an amendment in that it is debated, it must be seconded, and then it is debated, and then you vote like an amendment on the substitution, and if the substitution passes, then you vote on the substituted motion. If it does not fail, you would then vote on the original motion, so it takes two votes.
Okay. So the... We have a substitute motion in the floor. We take that first.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to Mr. Campbell?
Can we state clearly what the substitute is?
The substitute motion would be...
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, if I second it, will it give us an opportunity to discuss that, so Councilman Campbell can get a discussion, because I'm like Dr. Miller, I like to hear more discussion on it. Do I need to second it?
Quite frankly, we will need a second in order for to discuss it. So are you seconding the motion?
I'm second.
Now we can hear... Was your question, Dr. Miller?
Just what the motion is.
Okay.
What's the substitute? I don't understand.
Will you repeat the motion, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, I simply stated that I would like to have council to vote on either to keep the flag up or take it down. Simply stated.
Got the bottom line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's your second, Mr. ... And we have a second by Mr. Jones. Discussion the motion, Mr. Shanks.
Mayor, I think the motion, the substitute motion, is not timely or wise, and I'd like to just read one paragraph, one sentence of the code that we spent hours deliberating. If such are erected, it shall be unlawful for the authorities of the locality or any other person or persons to disturb or interfere with the monuments or memorials so erected. I believe that we discussed the issue, we received advice, we carefully deliberated the wording of this section of state code, and I think the substitute motion goes away from the very discussion and decisions that we reached during our previous session, which was ours.
Okay, further discussion. Mr. Gilstrap?
I guess I'm a little confused, Mr. Campbell, because I remember in your quotes in the paper, Richmond Times specifically, was that you was concerned that it was illegal, or we didn't have the authority to do anything, and you were concerned it would spend thousands, maybe a hundred thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money litigating it. I'm just curious to know why your position has changed.
Can I respond, sir? After doing some research, number one, you're right, I am for unity. We definitely hate to see our city or the citizens being divided. In reference to the money that could be spent, we are covered under the VML, so it's not affecting the city in reference to that avenue. And on the other issue, I do feel that we come to a point where council needs to vote either to keep it up or keep it down.
Even if we don't have the authority?
I question that. In talking with some legal advisors, we do have a right, and we have strong concern in the community, and people are very offended, and I think that we should exercise that right.
Further discussion on the substitute motion, Mr. Shanks.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to... And this may be out of order, and attorney will tell me so if it is. The... I'm trying to figure out the best way to word this. The question about the VML agreeing to cover the legal costs, do we have that as a definitive in-hand letter from VML?
We do not have that as a definitive in-hand letter, but I would have to check on that.
Okay, we have a question on the floor. We're in discussion. Further discussion, Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Gilstrap.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Councilman Campbell for the discussion, and if I'm out of order, you tell me. I've sat here for the longest time, for several weeks, and haven't said anything. And it really did my heart well when we opened up tonight with Troop One Fifty-Two, young ladies talking about the peace poll, and they led us into this. And then I look right across from me, there's a young person right across from me, and then I heard a baby crying, and I just thought about the youth and the youth in our community, and I saw Brian Hood and so many others who are working for the youth and the betterment of our community. And as I was sitting here, I actually thought that Councilman Campbell was gonna go in a different direction. And the direction that I thought that he was gonna go in is, it's hard for me, a person who's fought for youth in the community, and fought for youth with our youth council, it's hard for me to go against the law. We've asked our attorney to look into this very carefully, and I've heard what everybody's saying, and this is where I thought we were going. I thought we were going in the direction of not changing what our attorney, the law, but sending this to the point where if the Board of Directors from the museum wanted to go further with this, as was discussed, with the state, then we are having an avenue, because I think what's missing here is, this was presented to us from the Board of Directors from the museum. The law, we following the law, but someone asked a question earlier, who are we getting our information from? That is our attorney, and it's hard for me to go against the laws of our attorney. But, Councilman Campbell, I thought you were going towards an amendment in which this gives the opportunity for the museum Board of Directors, as was foreseen, to go to the state and say, "We want the Attorney General, we want more people to look into this." But if that's not the direction you're going, then I'm gonna have to rescind my second and go with what's the law.
Well, I'd like to stand, if I could, you'd love to?
Excuse me. Excuse me. Mr. Attorney, once you second the motion, can you rescind your second?
No, but you don't have to support the motion.
I don't have to support it.
You think so? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gilstrap?
Mr. Mayor, as you stated, we spent three meetings on this. I don't think... And I appreciate everyone being here, and I appreciate all of your opinions, but I do not think it's helped us to resolve poverty in our community, reduction of blight, bringing more jobs to our community, and actually helping those in our community today that needs help, and there's a lot of them. I don't know where, if we take the flag down or we leave it up, it's going to reduce bigotry. I don't know that it will reduce racism. I don't know that it will do anything except divide our community. On the law part, as I understand, and I did read it, and I have researched the history, it plainly states, "We do not have the authority to alter." Now, I agree with Councilman Jones. If someone else wants to take this battle up, such as the museum or the museum board or anyone, then I encourage you to do so. I can tell you that I sympathize with those that have been mistreated. I feel deeply in my heart that we were wrong. We did lose the war, but we have since united. There is no... Presently, there is no Confederate estate. There is not a Confederate nation. They chose to succeed, and then they chose to rejoin the United States. My personal opinion is, we can argue this, too, we are exhausted. I don't think you're going to change anyone's emotional feelings on this subject. The question, and the only question we have at hand, is do we have the authority or do we not? As I understand it, we do not.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Councilman Jones and Gilstrap. The reason why I stated the words that I did, first of all, it is a museum. It has not been certified or acknowledged as being a memorial. We do not come under that code. It's a separate issue completely. The code that was read by Councilman Shanks deals with a memorial, not with a museum.
This is a memorial. It was a dedicated memorial in nineteen ninety-four.
No, sir, it's not.
Yeah, I'm wondering, Mr. Campbell?
That's it.
Okay, motion to floor, property second, further discussion before we call for the vote. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I appreciate everyone showing up tonight. There's been good points on both sides. I do not appreciate the fact that at least three council members, livelihoods, and/or lives were threatened by people from both sides. That is not very conducive to getting the community together. And I realize that was a radical extreme on both sides, but we need to get together on this. You know, I... My heart is... I have no sympathy or love for the Confederate flag. My mother's family fought for the Union, and my father's fought for the South. So we didn't talk about this ever. We let it be. It was done, it was decided, and gone. But many people that I've talked to do think this is part of their heritage. They don't see it, as our city manager said, the KKK stole the flag and used it for their purposes, but the majority of people don't see it that way. They see it as part of their heritage. I mean, I don't, but many people do. Many African-Americans I've talked to, patients of mine, I ask them about the flag, "Does that insult you?" Because I know people, it does. They said, "No, it doesn't bother me, I don't pay any attention to it." And these are not thirty-year-olds, these are sixty, fifty, and sixty-year-olds and seventy-year-olds. They said, "It had no any difference to me, it's not gonna change my life." I don't know, I think we maybe let this polarize our community when it was unnecessary. I remember what happened back then, when there was... Colors had to sit up, go upstairs. I went upstairs with them, I had friends, and when we went to the theater, and they said the colors had to sit upstairs, my girl that was with me, my neighbor, and I went upstairs and sat with them. They couldn't sit with us, but we could sit upstairs. That's ludicrous, but we did. And if her mother had found out about it, I'm sure she would have... We'd have been in trouble. But anyway, so we did support our African-American friends growing up. When the first... When our school was integrated, until it was integrated, actually, children, high school students were bused across a state line to Tennessee where the black school was. Now, that's crazy, Virginia paying tax to Tennessee, but they did that. But when it was integrated, we greeted our friends, the ones we knew, and I knew most of them. Physics class, there was only about fifteen of us in physics class, but one very smart student, Fletcher Woods, we came in, and he naturally, I guess he was programmed to sit in the back of the class, but nobody sat with him. He needed a partner in physics class. You had to have a partner to do your experiments. I got up and went to the back of the class, and we sat together the whole year. And nobody gave me any grief about it, but we were good friends by the end of that year. But what I'm saying is, you know, my heart is in sympathy with taking the flag down, but my brain tells me, "We don't have the authority." I'm looking at a state law, and the only way, if we were sued to win that court case, would be on a technicality. You'd have to say that the flag was not part of the memorial. And I find, if you step back, I don't see how you can say the flag is not part of the memorial when the original wherewithal to the resolution say it is part of the memorial. So we're gonna put the city through a lot of division and a big court case, which we're gonna lose. I don't see how you can rule otherwise. My heart says I'd like to rule otherwise, but I don't think... My brain says they won't rule otherwise. So I don't think we can win a case. So again, my heart is, just remove the flag and get it out of the way, but my brain says we don't have the legal authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion before we call for the vote.
Just a reminder, this is a vote on whether to support Mr. Campbell's substitute motion or not.
Original motion is still on the floor. You know, this is a very tough issue. It's a very emotional issue. I don't see a win-win. I think any way that council vote will make some happy, will make some sad, that's unfortunate. And I lived in this community pretty much all my life, outside of military school, and I hear people all the time expressing their views and their concerns about this. And I hate it that it's really, I believe, to some degree, tearing our community apart, and that is unfortunate. I certainly hope, whatever the decision is, that we still remember that word, "love," and that we still respect each other. We are entitled to have our different views and still respect each other. This has been tough, it will continue to be tough, but I hope that we will come together as a community, respecting each other and making our city stronger. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilstrap?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Vice Mayor Miller?
No.
Mr. Rowley?
No.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
No.
Mr. Vogler?
No.
Mr. Buckner?
No.
Reverend Campbell?
Original motion? Discussion, original motion?
Point of order.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Attorney, it says, "Remove the Confederate flag from the grounds of the museum." Aren't we actually removing it from the memorial on the grounds of the museum? Should that wording be that way, or does it matter?
I think that... I think what the... That's just a summary, what the resolution says.
Okay.
Yeah, it says, "A resolution directing the city manager to notify the Board of Danville Museum of Fine Arts and History that it cannot, under Virginia law, legally remove the Confederate flag from the grounds of the museum." Because that's the request that was made.
Yeah, but I'm saying it should be from the memorial, because that's the issue. They're not gonna... They might put it back up, you know, we have enactments, we have encampments of Confederate soldiers, I don't think the museum's gonna block those. They might display the flag temporarily. We're removing it actually from the memorial, isn't that the question? That's what we're saying is not legal.
Well, I would suggest if that's how you feel, then we should amend the motion, move to amend the motion.
I so move.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, City Council?
Is that amendment need a second?
Need a second.
We need a second on that amendment.
All I'm saying is you're removing it from the memorial, not the grounds.
Excuse me, I missed... Was that an amendment, Dr. Miller?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Repeat the amendment, please.
Okay, all I'm saying is substitute the words, "Remove the Confederate flag from the memorial on the grounds of the museum," because that's the issue, the memorial.
Clear... I have it clear, now, you're saying, Mr. Dr. Miller, remove the flag inside?
Excuse me, do you understand that? Would you repeat that, Mr. Attorney, to me, so I'm clear on that?
I think what he is saying is substitute the word "grounds" for the word...
No, I'm not substituting, I'm just saying "and."
No, I think you're asking that the word "grounds" be removed...
Well, we can do that, Dave.
And that the word... The words... The word "memorial" be placed in there, so it would read "from the memorial of the museum."
Memorial, it is a part of...
Right.
Memorial on the grounds, or either way.
Memorial, it's a memorial.
Memorial is the debate.
Gentlemen, I do apologize, but the amendment is not clear to the chair.
Okay.
Will someone, please, make it clear to the chair?
All right. I'll read the whole thing. "A resolution directing the city manager to notify the Board of the Danville Museum of Fine Arts and History that it cannot, under Virginia law, legally remove the Confederate flag from the memorial on the grounds of the museum."
So the essence of what the vice mayor just said, Mr. Attorney, is?
I'm writing it down. That you add the word "memorial" from the...
Of the ground.
From the ground, yeah.
From the memorial of the ground.
Right.
Can you repeat it, please? Repeat that.
It would be legally remove the Confederate flag from the memorial on the grounds of the museum. And I think he... The amendment is adding the words "the memorial."
That's all. Okay, and we need a second, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion, Doc?
I'll say it.
Second, Mr. Gilstrap. Okay, discussion on the motion? Uh, Mr. Shanks.
The historic monument to be placed on the grounds of the property commemorating the Sutherland Mansion is the last capital of the Confederacy. The monument consists of a seven-foot granite obelisk, a flagpole flying the third national flag of the Confederacy. That was the ordinance that was passed in 1994.
Maybe I should have said the monument then.
Monument.
Okay.
Of which it is a part of.
Further discussion on the motion, Mr. Campbell.
Question. How can, those are my concern. They're not saying that it's a, a memorial. It's not stated that. We can't change what it is. So we are out of order on this statement, Doc.
Read it, read it again.
State code says monument.
Says monument.
Okay. Legally remove the Confederate flag from the monument on the grounds of the museum.
Have you changed the wording or not?
Yes, the monument. I'm trying to get consistent.
Motion on the floor, it's been properly seconded, but now there is a change to the motion is on the floor.
It's a friendly amendment.
If, if the person, if the person who seconded the amendment will allow the friendly amendment, it can.
That the, that the seconder of the motion agree with the maker of the motion?
I do, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Further discussion?
Could you restate the resolution? Amendment, please.
Madam Clerk, do you have that amendment as read? Or are you on, Mr. Attorney, either one? You're the attorney, either one.
I believe it would be now a resolution directing the city manager to notify the board of the Danville Museum of Fine Arts and History that it cannot, under the, under Virginia law, legally remove the Confederate flag from the monument on the grounds of the museum.
Okay, and there are three motions on the floor.
No. I, I, I believe there are two. There's an amended, there's a main motion and an amended motion.
But the amended motion was just also amended, again.
But, but we had the friendly second, so that.
Okay.
So there's just.
All right, so the friendly second bring the down to two.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And yet again, the next vote is on the amendment and then the main motion.
Yes, and we vote an amendment now, and once that has been settled, then we deal with the main motion, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion on the amendment, Mr. Campbell and Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Attorney, Mr. Whitfield, is it possible for me to have an amendment to the amendment to the amendment?
Yes, yes, sir. A, a motion may be amended more than once, so yes, you could amend.
I would like to put an amendment to the resolution that what has been presented to us by the board of the museum be sent back to them, let them discuss it and bring it back to us.
I believe, I believe that would be a substitute motion to the amendment, a substitute to the amendment.
That would be, the chair rules, that would be a substitute motion as opposed to amendment. But I think we need to deal with the amendment before we go to the motion, because there is one motion on the floor. I'm not saying Mr. Campbell cannot make a motion, but I think we need to address this amendment issue.
Well, I think now his substitution takes precedence over the amendment, so it's got to be either, either seconded or have a discussion.
Okay, so you're saying that, that Roberts rule would say that the motion take precedence over the, any amendment, what you're saying?
His, his current motion, his current motion for substitution takes, takes priority over the amendment.
Over the vice mayor's amendment?
Yes, sir.
That's right.
If seconded.
If seconded.
Is there a second to Mr. Campbell's, actually a substitute motion, really? Is there a second? Is there a second? Dyes for lack of second. Back to the amendment. Okay, Mr. Shanks.
Discussion on the amendment.
Okay.
I think the amendment is out of order, and here's why. The amendment says to legally remove the Confederate flag from the monument on the grounds of the museum. In the, the, the ordinance that City Council passed in 1994, it states, "The historical monument to be placed on the grounds of the property commemorating the Sutherland Mansion as the last capital of the Confederacy. The monument consists of a seven-foot granite obelisk and a flagpole flying the third flag." It's defining what the monument is. And now you're trying to separate the monument by this motion, this amended motion. I don't, I don't see how you can separate a monument.
Uh, Mr. Attorney, I'm, I'm going to have to yield to you on this one. At some point, we have like a point of order, and then we have a question with the point of order. Is it, or is it legal to amend the motion being recommended? Now, we're going back and forth a lot, and the chair had certain, had, the chair had certain discretion, and I don't mind ruling, okay? I'll make the decision, but I want to make sure that our council is in agreement with what we are trying to do here.
I think this is just part of natural debate. I don't think there's anything wrong with, with, with the amendment.
So, Mr. Shanks, you, you're making a statement, you're not calling the amendment out of order. Is that correct?
May I rephrase? I'll rephrase by saying that I urge fellow council members to vote against the amendment.
Okay.
Because I do believe that you are trying to separate the monument. There's one monument, and we're trying to make it two issues.
I take that, that you're really not, I take that, you're not calling the amendment a suggestion in question. You disagree with it.
My apologies.
Got it. Further discussion on the amendment? Uh, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong. No matter what happens here tonight with this vote, the museum still can go further with this if they choose to do so.
Sure. I, I'm not their legal counsel, so I don't know what, and I have not explored what the museum can do.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, further discussion? Mr. Gilstrap, Mr. Rowley, and then the vice mayor.
Mr. Shanks, I respectfully disagree, because what we're responding to is a request of the museum specifically stating, remove the flag. And what we are specifically stating is we do not have the authority to do that because it, um, uh, is part of the monument, or we, we can't alter the monument. So I, I think we're responding to the museum, whether we have authority to alter the monument or not.
May, may I respond to that?
Uh, yes.
I think the original language that was drafted by the attorney is the response to the question from the museum.
So you were saying you're in favor of the original?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
The original language was a direct response to the request by the museum.
Mr. Rowley.
Okay, I got you.
I would agree with Mr. Shanks. We can get into semantics. I think we need to describe it best we can, uh, to the nth degree. And if that's what it was before, I think that's what it needs to be now.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
I would second.
No, I was just trying to clarify exactly what we were doing, and what, what they asked us is to remove the flag. That's all they asked us to remove, put it in the museum. And I was, essentially what it means is taking it off the monument. But either way, it's going to accomplish the same thing.
The vice mayor's amendment is still on the floor, correct?
Just trying to clarify things.
I'm ready to vote on the amendment. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
No.
Mayor Saunders.
No.
Mr. Shanks.
No.
Mr. Vogler.
No.
Mr. Buckner.
No.
Reverend Campbell.
No.
Mr. Gil, uh, Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye. Now, we're in original motion, right, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion, original motion, before we call for the vote. Madam Clerk. The original motion.
Vice Mayor Miller.
I would be to, I'm just clear, an "I" vote was to.
An "I" vote would be voting in favor of the current resolution before the council.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
No.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
No.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes. Confederation, a recommendation to amend the city code to allow for other forms of payment to be accepted from customers desiring to purchase burial plots. Open a public hearing, anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close of public hearing, council, your pleasure, Mr. Shanks.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance amending the, and reordaining certain sections of Article Two entitled "City Cemeteries", of Chapter Ten entitled "Cemeteries of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia" as amended.
Second, Mr. Vogler. Discussion on the motion. Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I know we included credit cards. If somebody wants to write a check, will that be acceptable?
Yes, sir. All, all forms of payment, yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I think Mr. Barber's here, he could clarify that if you have a question, but I believe this is to open up all forms of payment.
Thank you.
Further, um, discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Confederation of adopting an ordinance vacating 0.253 acres, surplus right of, right of way on an unopened street. I open a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir, your name, please.
My name is Professor Vigni, I am a small business owner here in Danville. We own the adjacent properties on both sides of the right of way. We ask the council to abandon the right of way to allow future development for us to consider on the parcel. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Vice Mayor.
Do you have planned development there, or do you have plans at the moment to put something there?
No, we're considering several plans right now.
Such as?
Such as probably hotel, office building, uh, on the site.
So, then if you did build such a facility, it would be taxable.
Pardon?
We'd get, you'd pay taxes on it.
Yes.
Right now, we get nothing from it, okay.
Further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Council, uh, close of public hearing. Council, your pleasure. Uh, Mr. Buckner.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance vacating 0.235 acres of the surplus right of way of an unopened street off Apollo Avenue.
Okay, is there a second? Uh, Mr. Gilstrap. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I did not realize that one of the applicants was someone that I had performed services for within the last twelve months. And based on the Code of Virginia, an appropriate section, I must abstain to, from voting on this matter.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Confederation of amending the fiscal year 2015 budget provision ordinance to accept a federal grant for food service operation at the W.W. Moore Junior Detention Home. Council, your pleasure, Mr. Gilstrap.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance for a federal grant in the amount of approximately $45,872 to aid the food service operation at the W.W. Moore Junior Detention Home and appropriating same first reading.
Second, Mr. Campbell. Discussion on the motion. First reading, Confederation of amending FY 2015 budget provision ordinance to increase revenues and expenditures from the operation of the electronic monitoring program. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance by anticipating revenues in the amount of $58,201 from the operation of an electronic monitoring program, an outreach detention program for Pittsavanny County and appropriating same first reading.
Okay, is there a second? Uh, Mr. Campbell, discussion on the motion. First reading, Confederation of amending FY 2015 budget provision ordinance to accept a grant from Department of Juvenile Justice and appropriate matching funds for a local share. Council, your pleasure. Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance for a grant from the Department of Juvenile Justice in the amount of $86,999 and a local share of $26,324 for a total appropriation of $113,323 to provide for the electronic monitoring and outreach detention programs and contracted mentoring services for the city of Danville at W.W. Moore Junior Detention Home and appropriating same first reading.
Okay, second, Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion. First reading, Confederation of amending FY 2015 budget appropriation ordinance to accept a grant from the state of Virginia for a victim witness program. Mr. Rowley.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2015 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a grant from the Commonwealth for a victim witness program in the amount of $52,911 and appropriating the same for first reading.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Shanks, discussion on the motion. First reading, Confederation of approval, FY 2015 and fiscal year 2016 performance contract on Danville, Pittsavanny Community Services. I do believe we have guests in the audience, please come forward if you'd like. And feel free to say if you'd like to say, make a presentation, and then council will take its necessary action.
Good evening. Mayor Saunders, member of City Council, Mr. King, and staff. I'm Angela Fowler, board member of Danville, Pittsavanny Community Services Board of Directors. With great pleasure, I present to you all our annual report for fiscal year 2014. This year, our annual report theme across the lifespan focuses on DPCS as a preferred provider of top-quality behavioral health, intellectual disability, and prevention services to citizens in the city of Danville and Pittsavanny County. You each have one of these on your, um, desk there. The services and supports provided by DPCS are focused upon unlocking each individual's potential for self-determination, empowerment, recovery, resiliency, and health, and the highest possible level of participation in all aspects of community life. The variety and complexity of DPCS's services meet the needs of individuals with an intellectual disability, a behavioral disorder, or those who may be at risk. Tonight, I would like to tell you about a select few of the services offered across lifespan of the individuals residing in the city of Danville and Pittsavanny County. Our services and community engagement start with the infants, babies, and toddlers of our community in the Healthy Families Program. This program is a source of support to families for skill-building, long-term education, and resource management as parents from prenatal through the child's fifth birthday. Part C early intervention services are available for an infant or toddler demonstrating delay between birth and age three. A delay in the five developmental areas, cognitive, communication, social, emotional, physical, and adaptive, is evaluated and connected with the appropriate therapies to assist in overcoming the delay.
Just one minute, please.
Sure.
We're going to get a little silence outside. Just a little bit. It's the echo.
They're probably.
It's the echo outside. Thank you, I apologize for interrupting you. Continue, please.
No problem, Mayor Saunders. Do you know where I left off?
Uh, yeah, page nine, paragraph four, line.
Only five developmental areas.
Yeah, nine, four, three.
Cognitive, communication, social, emotional, physical, and adaptive is evaluated and connected with the appropriate therapies to assist in overcoming the delay. Staff provide referrals and coordination of that specialized care and will continue that coordination as the toddler grows. Older children and adolescents in need of case management or clinical services can receive a variety of behavioral health and intellectual disability services, including psychiatry provided via telemedicine, emergency services, and multiple community-based programs. Our services and community engagement continue with adults of any age and are provided in such a way as to meet the individual where they are in their recovery. All adults can engage with emergency services to resolve any immediate crisis. Ongoing services may be coordinated by case management staff. Regardless of the particular disability, residential and day service facilities are available to meet the individual's needs for safe and affordable supportive housing, as well as educational and engaging activities in the community. Names you may have heard, Riverview Place, Ashlon View, Piney Ridge Apartments, and Harmony House are more than just buildings. They are the home and support for many individuals. More intensive programming, including a residential crisis program known as the Foundation House, and a program of assertive community treatment known as PAT. These help resolve acute crisis and help individuals remain in our community. Now, these are just a few of the approximately 50 unique programs for adults and children operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disability, and Prevention Services divisions. In fiscal year 2014, DPCS directly served 10,031 residents of the city of Danville and Pittsavany County through over 152,000 distinct units of service. In closing, on behalf of our Board of Directors, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for appointing seven members from the city to the Danville, Pittsavany Community Services Board of Directors. It is our honor and pleasure to serve the community in this capacity. We appreciate your confidence and your ongoing support. Now, Jim is here with me tonight, Jim Bebo, to assist with any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rowley and then Mr. Vogler.
I'd just like to thank Jim, you and your board, uh, for the amazing service you do for our community. We really do appreciate it. It's not easy work. It's difficult work, and we appreciate what you do for our citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, I didn't have a question. I, I just wanted to thank you, and thank both of you, um, for everything that you do. Thank you for, uh, the, the information and the presentation tonight, and thank you for being patient and, and waiting to be able to give that presentation again. Thank you very much.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes, also want to say thanks for the services that you and the community. I know it's not easy. It's a big task, but with all your agency and the community, I wonder where would our people be who really need your service? I just want to say thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I think you all are doing an awesome job, and it just shows the good things in this community. You all exemplify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Gilstrap.
Thank both of you for coming. I thank both of you for the services. I've experienced some of your, uh, services through serving on some of their other, like, strengthening families, uh, RACEAP, which we talked about last meeting. Uh, you do wonderful work. We thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Counsel your pleasure. Uh, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year 2015 and fiscal year 2016 performance contract with Danville, Pittsavany County Community Services.
Okay, second by Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye. You mean you have more?
No. I'll just say thank you.
Oh, okay.
We appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, um, the Confederation, a recommend, a recommendation to adopt a resolution approving the updated emergency operation plan as mandated by state and federal requirements. I hope I'm reading the right one. I think I did. Second by Mr. Vogler. Uh, Ms. Vogler.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving an updated emergency operations plan for the city of Danville, Virginia.
Hey, there, second, Mr. Everybody. How do we do that, Mr. Uh?
You're the chair. You pick one.
Okay, Vice Mayor, okay. Is this that?
It is.
Document that took us six months to read? Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I read it. It took a long time.
Okay.
Will you recite it all?
No.
Further discussion on the motion. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Rowley.
Aye.
Mayor Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
So, Mr. King and Mr. Eagle, we can tell the state here, and thank you. We'll see you another 12 months or so. Wonderful. Okay, communication. Mr. Manager.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry? Yes, sir.
Uh, I know we're going to discuss this in the work session, but the request was a moratorium, and we can't take action in a work session. So, do we need to address the moratorium of not doing any demolition for six months? Are we on the way to the next meeting?
I can't speak for council, but I'm, don't know. We prepare it right now to take action while we in here. I'd like to hear more discussion about that. I, we recorded, uh, the Colonel's, uh, request, and we're going to talk some more tonight, so I prefer to talk about it in work session and then address it, sir.
I would just clarify.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Uh, no report. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Journey.
Yes, sir. Uh, two very quick things. Uh, first of all, I would like to congratulate Carla Archie, uh, who was on Tuesday elected to be the Superior Court Judge in the city of Greensboro. Um, and I'm very heartened that the Girl Scouts are still here because she is a native Danvillian, grew up through Danville Public Schools and George Washington High School, and as most of you know, Judge Archie is, in fact, the daughter of former mayor and former councilwoman Mrs. Archie, whose portrait hangs right there, and I am sure Mrs. Archie, even though she is not here, is looking down with a, a great deal of pride and probably going to everybody in heaven telling them about it. So, I just wanted to congratulate Carla. And just a quick shout out to, uh, Charlie Vipperman, who suffered a terrible accident yesterday and has had some surgery this morning at Corellian, got a visit from Elmo, but I just wanted to tell him and the family we're thinking about him.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay.
Nothing.
Okay. Um, nothing from the clerk. Please call the hall.
Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody that came out tonight in support and not in support, or whatever your stance is on it. Um, just thank you so much for coming. Um, also, I'd like to keep Charlie in our prayers. You know, he's, uh, like, uh, Clark said, he's gone through a lot in the past day or so, and just keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Also, I'd like to, uh, do a little shameless promotion here. Uh, this Friday night, um, at Delano's on Main Street, we're having a benefit for the, uh, Danville Area Cancer Association, a fundraiser, uh, No Shave November. As you can see, myself and Mr. Hood out here in the audience have already started, uh, the Grizzly Adams look. So, uh, it should be a lot of fun. Uh, hope to raise a lot of money for a really, really worthy cause. We've got a lot of sponsors involved with it, and, uh, should be a good time, and I hope everybody can make it.
Can we purchase a beer?
Yes, you can.
In case those of us who can't grow one.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell.
Yes, uh, it's been a very interesting evening tonight. I just want to thank all of the citizens for having the opportunity to express yourself. We live in America, and that's golden. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilstrap.
Uh, yes. Girl Scouts, thank you. That was nice of you to give us a personal invitation, and, uh, I've got it written down. I hope I'll be available for a team. It was an emotional night, uh, but a, uh, healthy discussion. I please don't interpret council's vote of where we think the flag is right or wrong. The vote was simply where it's legal or not legal for us to take action on it. And, uh, I can't speak for any other councilman, but I can tell you my vote was that, that I interpreted that we don't have the authority. It has nothing to do with my position on the flag. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I would like the Girl Scouts to please stand up there. Something I want to say to you all. I am so proud of each and every last one of you all. Tonight, you were able to just learn so many things, and the way you all carried yourself throughout this entire council chambers tonight, I am personally so proud of each one of you all. And Bruce, they stayed woke, and you were very attentive, and I'm so excited about the Pete's Pole on November 15th at 1:00 p.m. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and to the Girl Scout, please know it's not even election year, so he meant it, okay?
Vice Mayor Miller.
Well, I appreciate the Girl Scouts. I had two daughters. I went to the Girl Scouts. I sold a lot more cookies than Lee Vogler did, ever thought about selling. At least my two, um, daughters sold them, yeah. Uh, great job from the Girl Scouts. Uh, Clark, you missed the Fiddler on the Roof promotion. Again, your son's in Fiddler on the Roof the next two weekends at the North Theater.
Yeah, that's correct. The 14th, 15th, and 16th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd.
Come out, Danville. That's going to be a superb musical. Superb. A couple of things. Uh, Tuesday night, the mayor and I entertained a German-American, Norman Blevins, uh, uh, whose father's family is from America and mother's in Germany. He lives in Germany. And, you know, he's a friend of ours. He bought, bought me dinner when I went over in Germany a few years ago, and I paid him back. Uh, it's also an economic thing because he is from Bavaria and has some contacts there, and there's, Bavaria produces about 40 to 50 percent of the manufacturing, uh, goods in Germany. It's the industrial state. But the sad thing was, during the course of the conversation, Norman asked us, do we drink the water here? In Wenzbach, Germany, in Bavaria, they knew about the Duke Ash spill. That is really sad. Uh, and we assured him we do. And we assure you that Duke Energy is not off the hook for that. I mean, this, it got across not only the United States, but over into Europe about this spill. Uh, it's done a lot of damage, so we're on their case still. Uh, we did have a great tour of Lynchburg Economic Development last week. Uh, Lynchburg and Danville have a lot in common. Uh, old factories, they have shoes and textile. They, they renovate them into restaurants, hotels, lofts, condos. They got parking problems. We got parking problems. A lot of their parking's in private hands, and they had, the public done it, they don't have public control over them, even some parking decks. So, they have a major issue with downtown parking. They're even thinking about putting meters on their parking downtown to promote movement and get people off the street and, you know, and into decks or whatever. So, we have to look at parking here. They have very challenging hill topography. I mean, I just, I mean, if anybody ever complains about our little measly hill out here, go to Lynchburg. They have, they have hills everywhere you look, and yet that didn't stop them. They're putting up a bluff walk. They've got museums they're putting up. They're, they're doing a great job. We also learned something else. We're doing a pretty good job ourselves. They've had $60 million of private investment. We've had $90 million of private investment downtown. Our river trail is second to none. It's superior to theirs. Uh, our community market and Carrington Center and our muse, museum complex and our fountain beat anything they have up there. So, we did learn a lot from them, but we also learned that we're on the right track. Danville is becoming a destination community. We invited them down. They're going to come down and look at our community. We want Danville to become a, like, for a weekend, people think, let's go to Danville and spend the weekend, spend a little money, spend a little time. So, keep, keep supporting us, and the downtown is renovating. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to also, Troop 152, thank you for coming. I have two sons, but I've eaten a lot of Girl Scout cookies in my town. Uh, I would also like to thank, uh, I hope you didn't feel like I was giving them a hard time. I wanted to, I wanted to know some questions from them. The Colonel meter, I appreciate people who will put their time and effort into restoring homes. It's, uh, very expensive and very time-consuming, and I appreciate their effort in doing that, and I hope he continues to do more and more. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Shanks.
Yes, thank you to the scouts once again for being here. You picked a, a long night to be here, and y'all certainly were attentive, and we appreciate you starting the evening off for us. Uh, last night, uh, I had the misfortune of being in the room next door to where Charlie Vipperman was being treated at the emergency room, and can tell you, he was a hurting boy, and, uh, it's, I, I wish, I hope everything goes where it was. A, a fully broken bone that needed to be reset, and I know it's very painful for that young man. I'm hoping everything went very well for him. Uh, to all those who spoke over the last three or four weeks, uh, appreciate the interest in our community on either side of the issue. I, I really wish that, uh, an issue so divisive wouldn't have come up, but, uh, once it did, each side of the debate treated each other with respect and love, in my opinion, and, uh, and that's good for our community. I, I, I hope that from this we'll bring out continued positive growth by our community, uh, now that this is, uh, hopefully behind us. Finally, uh, it's early November, and we have talked about our downtown renovations, river district renovations. Keep all of our merchants, I urge all of our merchants in Danville in mind. Shop local, shop small business, and, uh, it'll be better for all of us in our community if we spend as much as time and effort and money here at home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler.
Um, yeah, I've got a few things. I'm going to try to get it in as quick as I can. First of all, the Girl Scouts, uh, it's already been said, thank you so much. And, and, you know, I think back to a few years ago before I was on council, and you all asked me to come be a part of your event, that it was, uh, at the mall, and I was certainly happy to do so, and it's been personally, uh, enjoyable for me to watch your unit grow and to watch the work that you all have done, and, and from back when, you know, that event at the mall, and a lot's changed since then. The mall's changed names. Uh, my hair's gotten shorter, and I've probably put on a few pounds for eating too many of those cookies, but the one thing that hasn't changed, uh, i- is the dedication that you all have and the work that you're doing, and I'm so proud of you all and so glad that you are here tonight. Again, I apologize that this ended up being one of the longer nights, but, uh, and you sat through the whole thing, and we're here, and again, that just shows, again, your dedication to the community, so I, I can't thank you enough. Um, and, and speaking of young people and being involved, there was a couple stories, uh, that I saw this week that really kind of, uh, got me jazzed up, and that was to see, uh, there was a young lady in West Virginia that's 18 years old that got elected to, uh, the state legislature there, and there was a young lady in Martinsville, 25 years old, uh, that got elected to their city council. And I know I'm a little biased, but anytime I see young people running for office and, and being successful, just running for office in general, or wanting to step forward and be a part of their community, uh, that's near and dear to my heart. So, uh, I was glad to see that, and I hope we see more young people in our community continue to be involved, whether it's running for office or being a part of an organization or a cause. Uh, I think it is a tremendous thing, and for young people to take ownership of their community and to be involved in that process. So, that made me happy to see. Uh, John Gilstrap wanted to make sure that I pointed out the GW Eagles.
Undefeated.
Undefeated GW Eagles, and, uh, they got one more regular season, uh, game, which is tomorrow night. They'll be in Martinsville, and then next Friday, they're going to be back home for a playoff game. We hope to have another one after that. If they win, we will. Is that correct, Clark?
We don't know. We won't know until Saturday morning.
Well, they're going to win, so we'll find out. But, uh, they're having a great season. Uh, I, I can't say enough about the team, the young men that are on that team, um, and they're doing a great job. And it's so important. I, I can't tell you just to watch them on the sideline, and I know Clark will testify to it. They look up in the crowd, and when they see the people of this community cheering them on, that energizes them. So, you know, let's, I encourage anybody, if you can, get to the game. Please do so. Uh, and I can't talk about GW football without thinking of Chuck Vipperman, and, and certainly, as has been expressed, uh, please keep his son and, and your thoughts and prayers, uh, through the rest of this week and in the next several weeks. Um, and, um, Councilman Jones wanted to make sure that I also mentioned the Veterans Day Parade, uh, is this Sunday at 2:30, I believe, and, uh, will be down Main Street. I encourage everyone to come out and, and take part. It's, it's been an enjoyable thing in the time that I've been on council to be a part of that, and I know, uh, everyone enjoys doing it, and it is a, a great parade, Veterans Day Parade. One last thing, um, I've had several residents that live on Orchard Drive who've brought this up to me for the last couple of years, and they said it got better for a little bit, but now it's really not, and that is the, the, uh, multiple people, it seems to be on a regular basis. I've had numerous residents tell me this on that street, uh, speeding and, and driving well above the posted speed limit for that street, and it's, it's a great concern to them, uh, because there are children who live on that street, uh, you know, of course, animals and stuff, and, and so, uh, I don't know if we could look in, I don't know what the legality of that is, to put some type of a speed bump or some kind of, of thing we could look into doing for those people, because i- it's been brought up to me more than once by more than one person over there. And, and again, when we're talking about children, I would hate to see something, uh, happen because if we have a chance to prevent it. So, I don't know if that's something we can discuss in a work session or look into, but, uh, Orchard Drive, uh, is a concern to me and many other people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Saunders.
The Girl Scouts, again, thank you so much for coming tonight, and just not tonight, but you come often, and really appreciate that. Uh, don't see any cookies yet, but, uh, maybe be some in the mailbox. I don't know, but.
Your order.
I'm looking forward to the, uh, the Pete's Pole event. Again, thank you all for all that you do, um, all year round, all year round. And to Councilmember, thank you also, really, for all the work that, that you do every single day. We deal with some very tough issues, and we agree and we disagree, but we were elected individually by the voters, and we do the best we can to make sure that we serve them. So, thank you for what you do. With regards to the flag, again, either way you vote, you're going to make some happy, some not going to be happy. You just vote your conviction, and then life goes on. But